That's what I was gonna say, cause how you gonna address that bridge right there?
Well, you see, this is funny because when I went to the meeting on there,
Oh well.
I was paying attention to the favor of the.
Yeah, they changed these things last year, it used to be we could shut them off.
Yeah, cause you gotta come down by a park.
I did, I told him, I said, you got a hard ride. And he didn't listen to some people on a few things.
I know what you've been telling me.
And it hurt him. And that statute thing didn't help him in any way.
It don't fit under that bridge.
No, cause they just expanded the bridge.
They have refused before.
And I always.
Mm-hmm.
But I do not, I decided to.
I said when there was that many people down there, they were bound in a terminal and do something.
Notebooks are for reason.
Mm-hmm.
You're talking about a bar.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, um.
It gets crazy.
Pearson Town.
Well, I still say he should have went out. I got you right to protest, but if one of you to put your hands on it, somebody's going to jail. If it takes a hundred, if I have to call the city, the National Guard or whatever, starts a riot, let it go, you know?
I didn't see that, is the mic on?
You know, but I, you know.
That's so true.
He said, oh, I had to go on what was presented. I had to go on what was presented to me, and that's, you know.
Not a problem.
But that, that hurt him, though.
Okay.
Yeah, man, what are you doing here, fool? Probably have it six more.
What's up, bud?
Good to see you. Missed your last one.
Yeah, I had a, we had a lot going on at work, I just, I had too much.
That's where we tired.
No, I'm working full time again. I retired, yeah, after thirty years in the sheriff's office, we built that other house, and the old lady says, you're not silly, you're not gonna be here all day, you're gonna go back to work.
I had no idea. But good for you. A law enforcement, or?
No, no, I got it, I'm, I'm, I went to work for Orange County Schools Maintenance, custodian at Grady Brown Elementary School.
Outstanding.
I go in about five-thirty in the mornings, and, you know, I'm done usually by about one-thirty or two.
So you a morning person?
Mm-hmm. I'm glad I worked here for the sign of this crap, because I would have voiced my opinion on that, I think it's a bunch of crap. The agenda's light, we can wait.
I'm not in a hurry, I'm good, how are you, how is your family? All right, I'll take that as a good sign. Look, we. Yeah. There's a bunch of stuff happening, planning and zoning at the council of our.
It was almost eleven o'clock. Before we got out of here. Yeah, I figured it was gonna be a long. We had, that was a week right before school, the teachers came back, and we had.
Got it, good, so commission member, I wish we needed, we need a development guy. Need, so Nate is a great guy, he's a professional planner, and he's a new guy down here, that took news.
Yeah.
What we don't have is somebody to represent news point. Well, we don't. We don't wanna start. It was worse, yeah. Keep it calm. Maybe it was a worse thing. Changed the plan.
We should all have a beer. Comments that were made, or desires that were.
They're, uh, commercial.
By the time.
Never showed up. And so they had to go back to. This is plan B, so. Since I waited here, I think, I would defer to the city.
We're gonna take just a minute before we actually open the meeting and give our new commissioner an opportunity to say hello and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Um, hello, um, I am Nate Baker, I was born and raised in Durham, North Carolina, and went through Durham Public School System, and then studied urban regional planning at Cornell, became a public sector planner in Texas for two years, before coming back and getting my master's degree in city regional planning at UNC, and since then, I've been at Clarion Associates in Chapel Hill, um, we do comprehensive plans, land development regulations, and those types of things, so I'm happy to be here.
Thank you, um, we have just a brief delay before we start the meeting, um, our chair is stuck in traffic, and, um, we're waiting for some introductory papers, so we still have just a, a minute before we actually get started. Perhaps some of our other commissioners would like to introduce themselves to our newest commissioner, who's joining us tonight for the first time.
Why don't we just go around the table?
I'll start with Commissioner Al Turk. We're doing just a little, brief introductions to our newest commissioner who is joining us for the first time tonight.
Yeah, well, we just spoke, um, and, uh, my name's Akram Al Turk, uh, I've been in Durham for a few years, I'm, um, working on my actual, or, I'm working on my PhD in, um, at UNC Chapel Hill, and, yeah, been here for a couple of years, two years, under commission.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Cedric Johnson, uh, this month is the first month of year three for my first term on the planning commission, I have been in Durham since two thousand and twelve, I think, I'm getting old here, uh, and, uh, my professional work is in the economic development finance space.
I'm George Bryan, I'm a county appointee to the planning commission, I've lived in Durham since late nineteen sixty-seven, and, uh, I have served off and on, on planning commission since sometime in the mid nineteen nineties.
I'm Erin Durkin, this is my third meeting as a planning commissioner, um, I grew up in Wake County, I actually work in New York, I'm a lawyer, and I have a planning degree, and I represent affordable housing developers in New York City.
And my name is Elaine Hyman, and, um, this is my second, beginning of my second term, um, I am retired from Durham County Government, so this is like, um, home for me, I'm a county appointee, and, um, I am retired HR director from Durham County Government, so I bring a little bit of that administrative policy to the organization, to our group.
So my name is Tom Miller, and I've been on the planning commission for four years, I've lived in Durham all my life, uh, before I retired, I spent, uh, over thirty years with the Department of Justice here in North Carolina handling land use regulatory questions.
Hey, my name's Armir Kinschen, and, uh, I am starting my second term as a county appointee, and I've lived in Durham for twenty years now, and I raised all three of my children here, and consider it to be my home, so excited to meet you.
I'm Paul Hornbuckle, I'm a retired lieutenant with the Durham Sheriff's Office, I've been in Durham all my life, I'm a county appointee representing the, uh, Mangum Township, which is the Rougemont and Bahama areas, and have been in that, you know, part of, basically, all my life, and this is, uh, going into end of my first term, uh, starting my third year.
Okay, Commissioner Williams.
Carmen Williams, Durham native, um, lifer in Durham, I think I came in on the back end of someone else's term, so I'm starting my first term, I'm not sure of that, but, um, that's about it, I work for an architecture firm, actually two architectural firms in Durham, so.
Thank you, I think we can officially get started, um, good afternoon, and welcome to the Durham Planning Commission. The members of the Durham Planning Commission have been appointed by the city council and the county board of commissioners as an advisory board to the elected officials. Um, you should know that the elected officials have the final say on any issue before us tonight. If you wish to speak on an agenda item tonight, please go to the table to my left and sign up to speak. For those of you who wish to speak, speak, please state your name, your address, clearly when you come to the podium, please speak clearly and into the microphone. Each side, those speaking in favor of an item and those speaking in opposition to an item, will have ten minutes, uh, to present for each side. The time has been divided among all persons wishing to speak, finally, all motions are stated in the affirmative, so if a motion fails or ties, the recommendation is for denial. Thank you, uh, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, I'm gonna do it from here, if that's okay with everyone?
Yes.
Commissioner Al Turk.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Bryan.
Here.
Commissioner Busby is, uh, running a little bit late, but he is on his way, um, Commissioner Durkin?
Here.
Uh, Commissioner Gibbs has requested an excused absence, so when we get to the end, maybe you can make a motion to that effect. Commissioner Hornbuckle?
Present.
Commissioner Hyman?
Present.
Commissioner Johnson?
Present.
Commissioner Kinschen?
Present.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Satterfield?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
And, um, late breaking just a few minutes ago, I received notice that Mr., um, or Commissioner Van has resigned from the commission, he's got some other, um, duties to fulfill and can't, uh, serve at this time, so he will not be here tonight, and, so, just wanted to let, you know, I just found that out.
Madam Chair, if it's appropriate, I move that we, uh, grant an excused absence to, uh, Commission Member Gibbs, and I suppose we probably, since we only have two cases, um, Commission Member Busby.
Second.
It has been moved and properly second that we offer excused absences to Commissioner Gibbs and Commissioner Busby, all in favor of this motion, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed?
Um, if for some reason, um, Chair Busby shows up, then we'll, we'll note that he is in attendance, so.
Thank you. Uh, the first item, uh, approval of the minutes and consistency statements from the August fourteen, twenty eighteen meeting. May I have a?
Uh, Madam.
Recognizes Commissioner Bryan.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the minutes and the consistency statements as presented.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bryan, second by Commissioner Hornbuckle, was I correct, was it Commissioner Hornbuckle? Yes, that we approve the, um, minutes and consistency statements for the April, for the August fourteen meeting, uh, all in favor of this motion, please let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed? Thank you. Uh, the first item that we have, um, public hearing, zone map changes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Before we get there, I want to, uh, just let you know that under new business, I have two minor items.
Yes.
And having said that, unless there are no other adjustments to the agenda, I move the agenda as amended.
Um, could you, um, maybe let us know what the items are, and I also need to speak to the advertisements and, uh, legal notice.
Right, so what are you?
What are your items that you're adding?
Uh, one will be, uh, just an announcement about an NC DOT project that commissioners will be interested in, and the second is gonna be my request for an excused absence for next month.
Okay, okay, no problem. All right, and, um, at this time, I would like to let the commission know that, um, the, all the cases for public hearings tonight have been advertised, um, in accordance with local and state law, and affidavits were such are on file in the planning department. Thank you.
Thank you, so then I have a motion to approve the agenda with adjustments.
Second.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Bryan, second by Commissioner Miller, that we approve the minutes with adjustments, all in favor of this motion, let it be known by the usual sign of I.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Our first item, public hearing, item number Z one eight zero 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 one one, Barbie Road Townhouse, we'll have our staff report at this time.
Good evening, I'm Jamie Sonjak with the planning department, I will be presenting case number Z one eight zero 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 eleven, Barbie Road fifty-four townhouses. Uh, before I get started, there were two corrections in the staff report, um, there was, uh, an incorrect reference to the number of units, um, so I made that correction, and also, uh, there was a, um, corrected reference to a legacy case, uh, on page two. The applicant for this case is Jared Edens from Edens Land, the address is one oh seven East North, um, NC fifty-four, uh, sixty-four fifty-two Barbie Road. The property is located within the city's jurisdiction, the request for rezoning is from commercial general with a development plan to commercial general with a development plan, the site is fourteen point three eight acres, the property is located within the commercial flom, there is no request to change that. Um, the applicant is seeking to rezone, uh, specifically to allow a hundred and twelve townhouse units. This slide depicts the aerial mapping, and the subject's sh- site is shown in red, it's two properties located on the west side of Barbie Road, um, on the north side of NC fifty-four. It is located within the suburban tier and within the Cape Fear River Basin. The smaller property is, um, these, I'm sorry, and these slides depict some of the pictures of the area, the smaller property is, uh, just under one acre in size and is vacant, and the larger property is about thirteen acres in size and contains a number of existing residential structures, um, a nursery, a nursery sales building, several greenhouses, um, all of which will be removed if the site is developed. There are a number of pictures also within the staff report that show area conditions, um, the site is adjacent to the Greens of Pine Glen Residential Development, um, there is a cell tower also to the west, um, to the north is, um, the interstate highway, uh, the property to the west was recently approved to allow a self-storage, um, building up to a hundred and twenty thousand square feet in size. Uh, to the southeast is a gas station, um, which is also undergoing a rezoning application, which will be in front of the planning commission, um, ideally in October. On, on the north side of, uh, NC fifty-four, um, south of the property, west and south of the property, there's a single-family residential neighborhood. The Seasons at South Point Memory Care Community, there's also the Meadows at South Point Residential Development on the east side, um, of Barbie Road, south of the site, um, and then abutting the site, um, on the north side of fifty-four, there are also additional residential developments, South Point Towns and, um, fifty-four Station. The zoning context map shows the existing and proposed, um, zoning designation, so the colors have not changed, on the left side you'll see the proposed, um, the, the existing zoning is CG, and, uh, the proposed zoning on the right side is also CG. The future land use map, there is no request to change that, um, the property is currently designated commercial, which is consistent with the rezoning request. The next slide shows the, um, development plan, and I'll just highlight some of the conditions, um, the maximum previous coverage, uh, is at, um, seventy percent proposed, a tree preservation requirement of twenty percent, and there are various, um, minimum side yards, rear yards, and, um, and different setbacks shown on the development plan. Summary of the key commitments, um, the development plan limits the townhouse units, um, to a maximum of a hundred and twelve units, there are, uh, various site access points, um, building and parking envelopes, um, various transportation improvements and roadway improvements, and design commitments relative to, um, the building materials, uh, and roof and features. In terms of consistency with the comp plan, the, it is consistent with the existing commercial future land use map designation, uh, and also consistent with policies two-three-one A, contiguous development, two-three-two A, infrastructure capacity, um, eight-one-two H, transportation level of service maintenance, eight-one-four D, development review and adopted regional bicycle plans, and eleven-one-one B, adequate school facilities. Staff determines that this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances, and I will be happy to answer any questions that you have, thank you.
Thank you. It's good to be here, I apologize for my tardy arrival, wanna thank Vice Chair Hyman for getting us kicked off and running smoothly as usual. Uh, at this point, we would open the public hearing, and we have one individual signed up to speak for the proposal, Mr. Jared Edens.
Good evening, uh, Jared Edens with Edens Land, uh, here representing the property owner, I appreciate Jamie's summary of our project, and I'll just summarize a couple of key points. As Jamie mentioned, we were here about a year ago for a retail rezoning on the same site, uh, planning commission and council both approved retail zoning at that time. What happened after that time was the market never really developed for the retail center, it just never came to pass like we thought. The next highest and best use, in our opinion, was townhomes, there was definitely a market for townhomes, so we started investigating that possibility, and, um, that's brought us here before you today. Uh, so as Jamie mentioned, about a hundred and twelve units, uh, this would be a much less impactful request than what we had a year ago, I think we're reducing our trips by about eighty-three hundred trips by going from retail to townhomes, our water usage is way down, um, everything is down generally, uh, we did have, we had a neighborhood meeting last week, voluntary, we only had one person show up from the immediate, uh, neighborhood, we don't have any opposition that I'm aware of, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have, thanks.
Thank you. And this is the opportunity, if anyone else would like to speak during the public hearing, and seeing none, I'll move to close the public hearing, and see if there are any questions or comments from the commissioners, we'll start on my right, any questions or comments? Commissioner Al Turk? The floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair, I have a question for Jamie, um, so you mentioned that there will be a rezoning case before us next month possibly, the gas station, can you say a little bit more about that, or what you, what that's, just the broad contours of that?
Yeah, the, the rezoning case, um, involves, um, upgrades to an existing shell oil station, um, located on the southeast corner of that intersection. Um, they are increasing the number of, um, bays, uh, on the existing site, there will be some, um, improvements to, uh, intersection access points, um, and there will be no increase, um, per se, in terms of a convenience store, it'll still remain as a pay station, um, so it's, it's really to improve, in- increase the number of bays, and the applicant can speak for themselves when they come, but, um, they are also hoping that that will alleviate some of the existing traffic, um, congestion within that area.
See, so the traffic impact will be, uh, minimal or zero, or what's, uh, in terms of, I mean, you don't?
Off the top of my head, I, I couldn't, um, provide you with that information, but.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I, I guess I'm asking because in attachment six, you mentioned the, all of, you know, if, all of the new developments that are going up, it would, it's going to increase the, the traffic, um, to more than, or a hundred and ten percent of the capacity, but that's below the hundred and twenty percent that would, um, be not in compliance with the comprehensive plan, um, so I, I guess that's good to hear that this rezoning is not going to increase traffic there, um, I, so, thank you for that, and one more question, um, and I'll ask it both to Jared and to Jamie. So, let me, uh, the, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, in their first question, um, asked why, and I think this is a good question, why are we, you know, why is CG zoning for a, for townhomes, um, I, I understand that that's allowed, um, but, you know, when I look at the rezoning map, it's very colorful, um, we have deep pink and light pink, and we have office institutional, or industrial, sorry, to the east of this, although it has townhomes, and I guess I'm curious if that's going to be addressed at some point, or is that something that's common in, uh, planning, that we just have a commercial designation, but we have a bunch of townhomes in it, it just seems like that's incongruent, or?
Well, the, the, the previous application for the site amended the zoning to become commercial general with a development plan, there was no residential as part of that application. The current applicant is interested in building residential, which is permitted within that zone, but they are specifically committing to residential, so essentially, um, it, it is a commercial future land use map, which, uh, coincides with that, but they are specifically committing to residential.
I, I guess, a more specific question, i- is there a reason not to encourage a PDR or something else from the planning department?
It's the applicant's request in terms of what they're seeking.
Okay, can you, I'm just curious, since we have a lot of time today.
Honestly, just for simplicity as much as anything else, I mean.
Okay.
We're already CGD before, I actually have another zoning you're gonna see in three or four months, it's townhomes on a CG-zoned parcel in another part of town, so it's something we've done before, and we will be doing a little bit down the road, but just for simplicity as much as anything else.
Okay.
Just to keep it CGD.
Okay, well, I don't have any questions.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chair, uh, so just a quick response to that, I, I initially had the same question, the latter question that was just asked, and I tend to agree, I, I tend to agree with the logic of that it makes sense that if we, if the applicant can do residential within the commercial, uh, zoning as it is, it was even in the case that the future land use is updated to make that residential, then it becomes more inconformity to what's around it, but an applicant would still have to come before a commission at some point if they wanted to reprogram that site, but the development is just so, is large enough, I think that it'd be just too costly to like tear that down and, and, so I had that concern, but I think that what is being proffered and committed to here addresses what could potentially happen to that site if we kept it the way that it is commercial, and the future land use map is, is another concern, uh, some rambling on that one, um, my question is, one for Jared, just to be, uh, to try to gain some clarity on the price point for the townhomes, do you have a sense of what, what that range will be, or in some kind of, um, relative to what's around it, uh, the site?
I mean, it, all I can say is market rate, which is what people say, right, but in this market, the rate changes pretty often, so I'm not, I'm not really in the business of trying to guess what the sales price is gonna be for units, because things are changing all the time, uh, but it's, it's just a market rate product, I can tell, it'll be comparable to what's been constructed across the road in the Pulte development across the road, comparable to that.
The market.
Size of homes.
I got you, I got you, and, uh, just a comment on the, the gas station question that, that, uh, my colleague referenced, I will note that, that is, that, that tends to be a concern to me as well, and we'll hear about it on, in the next session, uh, the next meeting, but what I will share, and it has, it has some tangential implications on our decision here, is that what tends to happen is there's only like two or three bays right now, but, uh, people are coming from both ways on these two lanes, and they're literally stopping, like, and it's right at this corner, so they're stopping, trying, waiting to turn in to get into these bays, and so during the peak hours of the day when people are getting off from work, and there's a school right down the road, less than a, a mile or so, you're just seeing like standstill traffic right at a light, because people are trying to get into one of those bays, and so that's something to think about when we're addressing the fact that that infrastructure is, can only support so much traffic with two lanes, and so I don't know if more bays will actually assuage that, that issue, but, uh, I think it would just encourage more people, they'll see more bays, and it's like, oh, there's an opportunity for me to, to get into the queue, just something to keep in mind, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Bryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, just to, in case some commissioners. Just to, in case some commissioners remember, the last time this particular piece of property was before the commission, I had to recuse myself because we were dealing with both a flume amendment and a rezoning. And I live within the notification distance for the flume amendment, but not the rezoning. So I just wanted to explain that in case some of you were wondering why I was up here tonight.
You're Mr. 750, are you?
Well, about 910, but... And living in the area and seeing what's happened around it, I didn't particularly care for the commercial that was proposed. And City Council heard about that. But I personally believe that the townhome proposal is a better fit for this site than what was previously proposed. And I'll shut up with that.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Bryan. For the record, you're always in a thousand with us. Commissioner Baker, and welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. So I have a few questions. Going to take advantage of the fact that there are a few items on the agenda today. First, I see that commitments are in excess of UDA requirements. You know, best practices would encourage a mix of housing, especially missing middle housing. And I see that one of the commitments here is to limit this to only townhomes, so kind of a homogeneous development with no mix of housing opportunities for people. So I'm just curious about why, why there's a limit on only producing one type of, one type of housing typology.
Honestly, the site is really only large enough for one, one type. I mean, these builders, I work with them day in and day out, all kinds of different projects, mixed use, singles, towns, apartments, 14 acres, they just, most of the builders that I work with, they just got to have a certain number of units to be there. And I don't think, if you split the uses between singles and towns, one, you're going to service less people. Your singles are going to be more expensive than your towns. And I just don't think many builders would jump on that.
Thank you. I'm also curious about roadway connectivity. I know that this isn't something that we can necessarily add, and this is certainly not the place to do that. But I think that that's something that we need to be working on and encouraging is improving connectivity and making sure that we have short blocks, short block lengths, and when possible, we have things like alleys. I am curious from the developer if, and this is not asking for a proffer, but if there are any green building practices that are going to be employed, if there's going to be any low-impact development that's going to be employed in this development?
Unfortunately, no. Market rate, most of the builders with their standard product, we won't have that on this project, I don't believe.
Okay. Okay. So we have one, one type of housing product here, and very little connectivity. Lastly, I just want to bring up the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. They brought up, they cited the UDO saying that the development in the CG district should provide safe pedestrian access to adjacent residential areas. Currently, there are no text commitments addressing safe pedestrian access to adjacent residential areas. Is this in violation? My question is, is this in violation of the UDO? And I guess that's for Jamie.
So Jamie Sanyak with the Planning Department. So they will be providing sidewalks in accordance with the UDO along the frontage of their property. That is the requirement. There is also a commitment relative to, I think it's access point, to A or B, I forget, in the event that the access point is provided to the adjacent property to the west, which was approved for the self-storage, they would be providing cross-access easements there.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Miller?
I'm with Mr. Bryan. I was very much opposed to the rezoning on this property, same parcel, a year ago to develop a conventional grocery store-laden strip shopping center. I think this proposal is dramatically better. I have opposed the creation of a new commercial node at Barbie and 54 from the beginning. All of Highway 54, indeed this whole area of the county that weaves in and around I-40 as it skirts under, underneath the city, is kind of the pinnacle of automobile suburban design. And I don't want, and it is very heavily commercially laden. There's more commercial, especially automobile-based commercial development in this part of the county than any other place, and we don't need more of it. The people who will live on this parcel will have probably more opportunities to shop and to buy groceries and all the other things that are missing in other parts of town than anybody else that lives in Durham. And so we don't need another shopping center here, so I'm glad to see a townhouse project. Normally, this is the, when we see a townhouse project proposed, this is the opportunity that I take to talk about townhouse design and also front-loaded garages and all those other things that give me heartburn, but so thrilled am I to see this turn away from what I thought was a really bad idea of creating a commercial node here to one that is, in my opinion, a smoother and more contiguous line of development for townhouses. I'm not, I'm going to lay off that. And so I understand what's going on here. I'm glad for the opportunity to fix a mistake that we made a year ago, and so I'm going to vote for this for all of those reasons and some I have not articulated.
Thank you. Commissioner Kenshin?
Yeah, I voted last year for this because I think the intersection is really problematic. I drive down Barbie Road almost every single day because 40 and 147 are impossible with all the growth. But I am pleased that it's going to be residential instead. I think that's a better use for it. But I really wanted to see the intersection get improved, and I'm pleased with the commitments I see here in terms of that left, that turn lane on Barbie and some of the other features I see on that intersection. It's going to be vastly improved. And with the gas station, which is not our case right now, but, you know, I can't wait to see that fixed as well because there's cars literally stacked on 54 trying to turn into that gas station, and it's always very dangerous intersection. So I'm pleased to see this as a great start, I think, and I like the use as well. So excited to see that intersection get fixed finally. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Yeah. From what I read in terms of the text commitments as it turns, as it reads for the access points, for access point 2A and access 2B, it says that if is decided upon, and if it is determined, then it will be designated. And given the current congestion, the issues that are already on Barbie Road and that particular intersection, the overload on Highway 54 and Barbie Road, I believe that even though a shopping center on that particular lot may have been bad, then this is just the lesser of the two evils. I feel like the impact of this particular intersection, regardless of the gas houses sits on that corner and people traveling through that area, is indeed the lesser of two evils unless you address the issue in putting a sidewalk on the front face of the property to Barbie Road. I'm not really sure where that's going to lead besides maybe Highway 40 and the overpass or the apartments across the street or the townhomes across the street. So, I mean, even though it is a need, I don't think that it's necessarily a need to build new townhomes in that area considering the fact that the ones that were just built probably aren't full. But that's just my personal thought process on it, and I feel like this is an opportunity to use land to build on it because the opportunity is there, and Durham is growing. I don't know that it's necessarily a need. I would think that some type of, if you're going to do it for commercial, maybe some type of, what is it called? A, like a greenhouse where people walk in, like a community, you walk in, you grow your vegetables, you sell them, and you leave. Like, that type of area to give people access. We can't depend on the infrastructure to be improved, but so much, and with another case coming up, I'm trying to figure out how they're going to build more bays in there and where they're going to expand to because the drop-off of the gas houses right there because of the new property that was just built and then whatever lies behind it, and then what is across the street. So I'm definitely not inclined to vote for this for the obvious concerns of the stress it's going to put on an already stressed intersection and neighboring for neighborhoods, the amount of traffic that's going to be generated on Barbie Road 54, both east and west. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. So just in response to that, is, I mean, I tend to agree with your presentation of the issues at hand, Commissioner Williams. My, when I put on my reality hat is that the greenhouse, the vision, what you envision as being ideal for that site is probably, I'm inclined to say it's almost impossible because the cost that it, that I'm sure that it took to acquire that land just doesn't make that feasible for the developer. Like, real estate is just getting very expensive in Durham. And so the question is, I mean, even if you don't pursue the high, the best and highest use of that site, something is going to go on that site that's just not going to be congruent with the current infrastructure. And like, I think that's a larger, a city issue. Like, we have to figure out, like, how do we enhance the physical infrastructure in this area of Durham, along with how many other areas in Durham, to support the growth that's going on. And so as we've shared with many other applicants or opposition to applicants, is that something's going to happen on that site that's just going to make it even not the ideal outcome in regards to the congestion, the traffic, et cetera, et cetera. And so it's a question of, and I'm not saying that this project gets us to the best outcome, but it's like, well, how do we try to mitigate as much as we can what is going to happen, which is that site is going to be developed? And I don't have the utopia answer myself, but, you know, I just, it's just important when we like, thinking about the reality of what's happening here. Some private owner owns that land, and they're going to do something to it sooner rather than later. And so it's a question of what is it going to look like? And what's the implications and the impact? And do we have an opportunity to assuage the bad and highlight and enhance what we can possibly on the positive side?
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Williams, counterpoint?
Yeah. I mean, I understand where you're coming from, but doing something just because eventually something will get done, that's going to cause more harm to good. And the way I feel about it is, we can't always just say, well, eventually something is going to happen because our voice is to determine partially what is going to happen and to speak to that effect. So if we voice as 14 bodies, or 13, or 12, or 11, or whatever the case may be, then it goes to another body, which they have the opportunity to kind of steer this entire process into where it may go. If it doesn't sound right first, and it doesn't sound right second, then maybe a third will come or a fourth. At the end of the day, until something get approves, nothing gets built. So it's not necessarily a process of approving something just because eventually something will happen. Until there's the right fit, we have the opportunity to do that, to get it right. Because it's right now, it's sitting dormant, so it's not adding any more traffic or any more impacts because it's not being used. And right now, I can't say, well, because the owner has done this or because the owner has done that, then you spin it until you get it right. And if it's the right fit, then it will generate its own revenue.
Follow-up? Thank you. And I'll follow up, and then we actually have other commissioners with questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. This, we have time.
So in response to that, and thank you for sharing those comments to staff, my question is, given what the current zoning allowance is on that site, what is, what is the max, as we said, what's the, if you can do the largest development type on the potential property, on the property as it's currently zoned, what could the developer potentially put on that site right now without having to get a yea or nay from us on what they would pursue?
Jamie Sanyak with the Planning Department. The rezoning that occurred in 2016 allowed up to 160,000 square feet of uses that are permitted within the CG zoning district. There were certain exceptions to that. Self-storage was one of them. But that's what be the max on the site right now unless the zoning changed.
So that's the reality. And I just wanted that to be on record, that that can happen right now, whether we fall asleep up here or not, that, you know, something is going to happen on that site, and that's the reality, so.
Commissioner Durkin?
I just had a follow-up question for the applicant on the question about type of housing. You mentioned that single-family was not thought about, but what about duplexes or quadplexes? Because I think that's more of a greater need than additional single-family homes.
I mean, that is a different housing type, for sure, but that's a much different builder also. The number of builders who build townhomes as opposed to the number of builders who are going to go and build duplexes, very different buyer pool and builder pool. The goal here was really to, if we were going to do townhomes, was, you know, to get as many units as we can get. I mean, the townhomes across the street, they've sold out, and they were selling 15 to 20 a month for the entire time they sold. So they're gone. The demand is there. So we know the demand is there. We obviously need housing in Durham. We need townhomes in Durham and condos and apartments in Durham and less of the singles. So we felt like this was just the best we could do. Thanks.
Follow-up?
No. Thank you.
Commissioner Miller?
So I wanted to point out, there's no particular virtue in duplexes or triplexes. As a matter of fact, because they are almost invariably rental properties as opposed to home ownership properties, I don't favor them. I would like to see us improve the percentage of home ownership properties. Home ownership properties grow wealth, grow wealth for families. Where rental properties are wealth transfer engines. Townhouses, which are a form of multifamily housing, are technically missing middle houses. I don't want to get caught up in these, these new terms we're throwing around. I think what we need to do is look at, at the way these properties perform in terms of how they supply housing, where we need housing, and also their general compatibility as that's contemplated in our comprehensive plan and as a matter of good planning. Because of the way this area, it has been developing, even though it has been admittedly taking advantage of the counterintuitive uses, you know, you name a zone, commercial, you name it office, but you allow certain, certain types of residential uses, it creates a dissonance that people have noted here today. I'm thrilled at the way this corner is developing out. This is going to be at the high end of what I would call, of what our comprehensive plan contemplates as medium-density housing. Isn't that right? About 10 units an acre, 10, 11 units an acre? So, and it, so we have a way of, we're adding housing. We're adding it at a, at a certain density. We are bringing the number of trips per day down by 8,000 on a facility that is already crowded and is going to get worse. I see this particular project as a win-win project. And while I would like to see more commitments about the actual townhouse designs, I do not want to risk losing the opportunity to fix a mistake that we last, that we asked, we created last year when we zoned this commercial, where we approved the shopping center by insisting on something I don't believe this developer wants to give.
Thank you. Seeing no additional questions or comments, before I call the question and ask for a motion, I'll say that I also agree that this is an improvement from my personal perspective. I do have concerns about the traffic from a long-term perspective, but I do think this particular issue does address some of the most immediate concerns, and I do plan to vote to approve it. But this is an intersection that's getting busier, and I do hear some of the other concerns that some of my fellow commissioners have raised, and I think we're going to have to pay attention to as we move forward. That said, I will look for a motion if someone is willing to make it. Commissioner Bryan?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we send case Z1800011 forward to the City Council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Bryan, seconded by Commissioner Satterfield, even though it was close. Why don't we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Al Turk?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
No.
Commissioner Bryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Satterfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Durkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyman?
Yes.
Commissioner Busby?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenshin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hornbuckle?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
No.
Okay, motion passes 10 to, 10 to 2, sorry.
Okay, motion passes 10 to, 10 to two, sorry.
10 to two. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Edens. Our next item is a case TC 18, quadruple zero six. This is the private streets text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. Mr. Stock?
Thank you very much. Michael Stock with the Planning Department. Text amendment TC 18, zero 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 six is a privately initiated request to amend paragraph 12 to two, other forms of access. Specifically, it would allow an additional instance where private streets would be allowed. Currently, the ordinance allows private, residential private streets in four circumstances, for, to serve a maximum of six single, single-family or duplex lots, for multifamily developments if shown on a development plan and within conservation subdivisions. In this proposal, the private streets would be allowed for only single-family developments, only within the county jurisdiction, so any single-family development within the county jurisdiction only. Private streets must be designed and constructed to city or NCDOT standards as applicable, but they would not be maintained by either the city or the state. The applicant is here to answer any questions, and I'd also be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And can we, do you mind if we can see if anyone has signed up for the public hearing? And we'll move to open the public hearing. Thank you. And we have one individual signed up to speak, Mr. Mitch Craig. The microphone is yours. If you don't mind, if you can come up and give us your name, your address, and make your statement.
Joseph M. Craig, 301 Glenwood Avenue, Suite 220, Raleigh, North Carolina, 27603. And I'm representing the applicant and here to answer any questions. The main issue for this subdivision is, the majority of the subdivision is in Chatham County. It's completely developed in Chatham County with private streets. There's a private street that comes off of 751 that serves the majority of this development, and they would like for their streets to be private. I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak as part of the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll move to close the public hearing and come back to the commissioners. Any questions or comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Baker?
So, questions for staff. It's my understanding that communities that have historically been more liberal in allowing private streets are, in fact, moving away from that policy. So I'm curious, has staff conducted an assessment or held a dialogue with some other communities that have this policy? And, or have you looked at what are the potential consequences of this policy if you allow it countywide?
Well, allowing it countywide, it wouldn't be countywide, it would just be within the county jurisdiction, so it wouldn't apply to the city at all.
Okay. County jurisdiction.
So the, really, the only, the negative impacts that we would believe would be to the development, to, to the property owners themselves if they could not maintain it and then they went to seek acceptance from NCDOT, because from my understanding is that it would have to be maintained. The reason why we require it for, to be built to city or NCDOT standards, so if they sought acceptance by those, by those entities, then they're already built to those standards and they could be taken over. They would need to be maintained to a certain level for NCDOT to accept them, so they, they'd have, there'd have to be a certain quality to the, to the maintenance of that road. That would be the biggest drawback.
Okay, I have two other questions. So as the city grows in population and municipal borders move out, would it be correct to assume that eventually the city is going to be asked to annex some of these properties that have private streets and potentially have to annex properties in, in the scenario where the HOA fails, have to take over maintenance of those streets?
Usually, when we see a number of new developments that are coming in, they're already going in through city annexation process, so it's pretty rare to see those kind of instances happen. Any new developments are going to go, again, go through the annexation process with the city, and they'd have to develop through the city processes.
So it's, but it's rare today, but then we would permit private streets, so it might not become rare anymore?
It still would be pretty rare. There's a good part of Durham County that is not likely to be served by the city in any foreseeable future.
Okay. And last question, to me, this is, this is a pretty easy no, but I would like to ask, are there other more site-specific alternative solutions to the problem that, that, that exists today for the applicant?
I'm not aware of any, but you could ask the applicant to see what kind of solutions they saw.
That's all.
And Commissioner Baker, if you'd like, you can directly ask them to speak.
We looked at doing public roads, and the reason that they want to do private is because small subdivision roads are just not a priority of the city or the DOT. And they have, you know, in this particular instance, they have the means to maintain them. In most instances, I would say that's the case because they're going to be, be developed as private, so people that are buying in that subdivision would know that those streets are private. And, you know, frankly, it's just, the biggest deal is just not a priority for the DOT, and that's, that's the biggest issue. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Other questions or comments, Commissioner Al Turk?
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Chair. I have another question for staff. So you mentioned that the streets would have to be maintained up to NCDOT standards. How often, I mean, do you have any sense of how often NCDOT does this? They go around and say, oh, these private streets are up to our standards?
I think they're only going to look at it if they're petitioned to take over the street. So.
That's it.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller?
So while you're standing there, instead of doing a text amendment, they could have applied to rezone this property to a PDR with essentially the same lot layout that's, that's on the ground, right? And then they could have had private streets under the existing code provision.
Correct.
So there is a site-specific solution. What this does, because I think it's, it isn't immediately intuitive for me, when we say for any single-family subdivision, we're talking about subdivisions that are zoned between RU, well, I guess you, we probably don't have any of those in the county jurisdiction, but we could. It would be any.
No, you couldn't. No. In the county jurisdiction, unless it's the, if we're RU instance, unless there's county within the urban tier, you couldn't rezone to RU.
All right.
Most of it you're going to see as RS.
It's unlikely that it could be RU, but we're talking about the single-family zones that is, that are described in the code.
RSR.
That have the R, the R prefix and probably rural residential as well.
Correct.
And that's, but that's a lot of land. And so the development limitations, if I understood you before, though, in the county jurisdiction, since we're talking about the county only here, are the availability of, water and sewer utilities primarily. And the city controls those under its current policy. So moving forward, new subdivisions, I know there are plenty of existing subdivisions out there that have septic tanks or private wells and those kinds of things. We're not creating those much anymore.
No.
So those will come into the city, and once they're in the city, they could do private streets if they wanted, couldn't they? Or do we just have no private streets in the city?
Private streets, it would be limited to very small, so the first instance that's already allowed, so serving six or less.
Or PDRs.
Or, or PDRs if it's on the development.
And we do a lot of PDRs.
Correct, correct.
So, and we don't, we, you know, it, my experience here is only four years old, but we've had very few cases that have, have been to R zones. You know, it's usually a PDR because of the improved flexibility of, of, of lot sizes and housing type.
Right.
So I personally do not see a, a real threat with this private streets provision. I realize, though, it gives Mr. Baker, whose expertise I think I'm going to become accustomed to deferring to, some heartburn. And there is a property-specific solution here. I would like to ask the developer, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
You may.
Whether or not they had considered rezoning this property where they want private streets to a PDR zone as opposed to this text amendment, which runs from, from the Person County line all the way down to where you are in Chatham County. Because I think it is the extent and the difficulty of contemplating the consequences of so great a change that is giving, or giving some of my colleagues here heartburn when we could have done something that was just for your property to fit it within the current code requirement for private streets.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, but some of the development is developed, is being developed. Can it still be rezoned to a PDR if it's already been developed?
If it's, well, with a PDR, you would have to get signatures from all the property owners within the, within the develop, in the, in the site. So if it's an area that is still controlled by one or maybe two entities, that might be easier to do, because it already has multiple property owners, that would be a more difficult task.
Which would not be a problem in this instance to rezone it to a PDR. It's just the timeframe is probably the biggest issue. To be frank, the timeframe to rezone it to a PDR is more than, than this instance.
Thank you. I had not actually considered the, the practical implications of having to go get everybody to sign on to it. That's a good point. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? All right, seeing none, this is also an opportunity just for any, either a motion or for continued discussion, if people have thoughts they want to share. Let's see, half Commissioner Johnson, there it is. Commissioner Johnson?
Robinson with the question. Thank you, Chair. So just in response to, or just follow up to the, the comment about the time process. So if, if, if this was approved in, in favor of the request tonight, would it likely go to the council for a vote next month? Or what would be, trying to get a sense of the shortest versus the potential longest? So if, if this happens tonight in favor, how quickly will the final affirmation likely be?
Probably looking at before the end of the year, probably November, December. Because of lead times and such.
We're talking about the, the Board of County Commissioners.
Board of County Commissioners, correct.
And, and may I ask the applicant, so how many signatures would, at this point, would you have to go back and get in regards to the alternative option, potential option of getting the PDR with the private streets in it? How many, and, and then this follow-up question would be the process once that happens, but how many signatures would you have to go and fish out, fish out of society?
Currently, there's 40 houses in phase nine, and 16 of them are inhabited, so probably 16 plus 17, so the homeowners association would be, so 17.
And what's, do you have a, an idea of how quickly you would be able to get 16 plus one?
That would be fairly quick. I think it's the process that, and frankly, we, you know, when we talked with the city and we've talked with the JCC, PC as well, and nobody felt like this would be a, a negative proposal to anyone. So that's why we chose to pursue this first, because, you know, it's, it allows it, but it doesn't require private streets. It allows private streets, and, you know, most people don't, don't want private streets, so they would develop them to be taken over by the city or the DOT. We're, we are developing them to be per the requirements of the city and the DOT, so.
I, I get the logic. I was, I'm just trying to, so based on this information, upon getting all of the signatures, how quickly would the applicant, well, how long would the applicant have to wait before they're back before this body with the request?
Let me answer that one.
Jamie Sanyak with the Planning Department. So my understanding, and I don't know this site 100%, but they would need to seek a rezoning. Is that correct?
That's what they're asking.
Right, and not a, and not a future land use map amendment?
I don't know about that.
So they would need to seek a rezoning at a minimum. Future land use map amendment is uncertain at this time. The process would be that they would need to start with a request for a pre-sub, that's a requirement before the zoning. If there's a future land use map amendment associated with that, they would have to hold a neighborhood meeting prior to submission. Once they got all their application materials together, then we start the review process. So ideally, the rezoning could be in front of the Planning Commission, I would say no less than three to four months, depending upon the type of application that's submitted. Again, I am not familiar with this application per se. Once the Planning Commission makes a recommendation, then ultimately would need to go to Board of County Commissioners. So they would ultimately be the one who would adopt the rezoning. Then it would become effective immediately.
And final question, I promise. So in the case that there are some unforeseen implications, negative consequences with the decision we make tonight, what would be the retroactive response? Like, would it be that no longer going forward with subdivision, like if we had to roll back what we're, what we would potentially agree on tonight, how would that work if we wanted to address something that we are not thinking about tonight, and so we don't want it to happen to future subdivision opportunity, having the ability to have private roads because X, Y, Z is likely to happen, and we don't want X, Y, and Z to happen?
Not quite sure how to answer that question.
Possibly, may I try to reframe the question?
Please help me.
If we believe this is the fastest path forward, we don't see that there will be many, if any unintended consequences. Let's find out, how, what if we find out there are unintended consequences and we wish to try to then remedy the situation? If it turns out we've opened a can of worms, we don't think we will, but let's say we do, how would that move forward for us to remedy the change that we're making tonight? Is that an accurate question?
Thank you for the clarity.
Well, that's something that we, we do on a regular basis with our ordinance and taking a look at how new provisions function and perform. We do that through omnibus 10, 11, 12, 13, up to 20. You know, we haven't gotten there yet, but it's probably going to happen. So one of our jobs is to, to make sure that we, that any new provisions are functioning in a way that we're at least anticipating or not negatively impacting things. And if we see that there are negative policy implications or, or real-world implications even to that, then we will make corrections to it and bring it back to you.
Great. Thank you. And Commissioner Johnson, thank you, because that's the same question that I was sitting here thinking as well. Commissioner Durkin, and then Commissioner Miller?
I just, it's not quite a question, but I just, the, the idea that you'd have a universal text amendment for a very project-specific project gives me heartburn personally. And if there's a solution that is solely project-specific, then I would much prefer that route be taken.
Also, keep in mind that the ordinance does allow private streets for single-family up to six dwelling units, so I would think that you probably have some of those in the city as well. And, you know.
Well, I guess a follow-up question to that statement is, you said that most of the development is in Chatham County. How many houses are in Durham County in this development?
When it's completed, there'll be 91.
And within Durham County, okay.
Yep, and 31 are allowed to be, to have private roads already because of a development plan.
Okay.
So this is just to make the other ones in that development private.
Yeah, no, I understand that that makes sense so that it's contiguous throughout your development. I just would rather have a project-specific application.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller?
So I feel the same way Commissioner Durkin does, but on the other hand, I think it's our job to actually, to do the very best job we can to anticipate the, the consequences and to not go forward if we're, if we're uncertain. But I also believe that with the people in the room, especially our staff, the likelihood of very many unintended, or discoverable unintended consequences when we vote is small if we, if we search them out and satisfy ourselves with the answers to the questions. I know Mr. Baker said this was an easy no, and so I'd like for him to articulate for me, to guide me in my voting, what the negative policy consequences of, of voting in favor of this text amendment might be. Why would I vote against this?
So we come across a lot of counties in our work that
So we come across a lot of counties in our work that are experiencing issues with HOAs failing. They then have to take over the street. Oftentimes, there's a situation where folks buy into a neighborhood not realizing that it's on a private street, look at their neighbors down the road, and, you know, say, you know, why am I paying my taxes? But at the same time, I have to, I have to pay extra to maintain the street. Wake County is experiencing this right now. So, and then we see San Francisco where, I mean, this is an extraordinary case where a private street was actually purchased by someone who didn't, didn't live in the neighborhood. And so we see lots of unintended consequences. HOAs fail all the time. You know, I, I totally feel for the applicant. I, I want to find a solution here, but to, to go ahead and change, make a text amendment that applies to the entire county, based on hardship being experienced by a single applicant on a single property, does not seem to me to be the most appropriate solution in this case.
Mr. Miller?
And I know we have one commission member here who has lived through the circumstances that you have described of being a, a development caught with its trousers down and left holding, and the, and the homeowners left holding, and the city left holding the bag. I was wondering if Ms. Hyman had anything she wanted to add to the debate.
Only that, you know, of course, it's an issue that gives us heartburn because there are unintended, unintended consequences that happen to homeowners and when HOAs fail. So I've had, you know, I've experienced both. But to have, but to address it from an ordinance perspective does give me heartburn. So, and only because I've experienced it.
But I do want to point out that that was in the city, and those were streets that were caught half-completed on their way to becoming public streets through the subdivision approval process. So voting against this isn't necessarily going to prevent homeowners from being caught with incomplete developer-built public streets.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Al Turk, you've been very patient.
Thank you, Chair. Sounds like we need to stock up on Tums along with our water here. A lot of heartburn today. I'm, you know, I think I'm, I've been convinced by Commissioner Baker, and, and I won't repeat why. And so I would be inclined to vote against this, but I would like to at least give the applicant an opportunity to, you know, if you want to have a continuance or think about it, and if you, if you want us to consider that, to do that, to grant that continuance, I think we would probably be happy to. But I want to leave that in your court. I'll just ask you whether you'd like that, or whether you would want us to vote on it as it stands.
Let me, let me confer.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll give you a moment. Well, I'll ask if there are any additional questions or comments. Commissioner Satterfield?
Well, I just wanted to take a different tack. We're looking at individual requests to change an ordinance, and we really feel, a lot of us, like we would rather have a solution for that particular property as opposed to something that'll impact multiple properties countywide. Other piece of it to me is setting a precedent for an applicant who may not be able to meet their timeline for whatever type of a situation they're looking at. And so, well, you know, we'll just see if we can't get the ordinance changed instead. So that was just what I was thinking about. That was on my mind.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? And you're welcome to come back up. And I did, I would just ask Commissioner Al Turk if you don't mind just repeating your question.
Sure. I think the question is, would you like a continuance, or would you like us to vote on the matter today?
Yeah, one more question before I answer that. Michael, do you know of any developments in the county of Durham that are owned by HOAs that have private streets that have failed? Does the city know of any of those?
I'm not aware of any, but that doesn't mean that there aren't.
Okay. No, we wish for you to vote on it. We think it's, that it is a, it's a good proposal. I don't see any, we've talked about it for the last three months with the city, with the JCC PC, and we don't see any negative things that could come up. It's a, it's not a requirement, and it's not changing the, the ordinance. It's actually just amending the ordinance to allow private streets for a subdivision that is larger than six single-family units. Like I said, you could come in with six single-family units and have a private street, and I don't see how that's any different than allowing an entire subdivision to have private streets. You have more homeowners that pay into an HOA when you have more units in the subdivision. And I don't see how that's any different than, A, it's just allowing more units into a private street subdivision. So, no, we wish for you to vote on it.
We appreciate the input. Thank you for answering the question. Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Bryan?
Just one final question to the, to the, from, from my perch here. So what, what happens, what does your project look like if this request is not granted? What does the final product look like?
Well, again, we can, it's, it's a mixture of things, really. We have a development plan for 31 lots that shows private streets that has been approved, which is, you know, it's adjacent to, the only, the only part of this subdivision that, that, that can't be private is Phase Nine, which is 40 lots, because it's already been approved, it's being developed. The previous engineer didn't come in with a development plan for private streets. And that was one of the reasons why we were coming in, is so we have private streets for Phase Nine. And I, I get that we can have a PDR, and I get that we can have, you know, a development plan. And, but I, I just don't see what adding this to the ordinance. I don't see, you know, the negativity to that. But it, it looks like a, it's jumbled up. There's some private streets, there's some public streets, there's some public streets that haven't been taken over by DOT yet, that will be taken over by DOT. And then when we come in with a PDR, the homeowners association will take them back over from DOT, so.
So just to be clear, so Phase Nine is the component in Durham County that you're asking for the request? And so, and so in the event that you're not granted the, the ordinance change, the streets will be public, maintained by?
Some, some of them will be public.
And then some of them will be private.
DOT, and then they will, some of them will lead to private. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
So it's, you know, doing this for, for us is for continuity, but I really don't think that this would be developer-specific. I think it would be a good plan for the county. If you have a developer that is willing to put in private streets and can do it per the ordinance, you know, I don't see how that doesn't help the city, the county. I mean, it's, and we're really not talking about the entire county. We're talking about areas outside of the city for the county.
Great. Commissioner Bryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been listening and actually learning quite a bit for the, listening to the arguments one way or the other. My own feeling on the matter is, is that I, I trust that our staff has done their homework and has thought of some of the same things that we've brought up. So from my perspective, I'm going to take a chance that we know what we're doing and vote yes on this, knowing as we have discussed that if we mess it up, we have a way to fix it.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? And if not, this is the appropriate time for a motion. And a reminder, we make motions in the affirmative, and then you can also vote against your own motion.
Mr. Chair, I will move that we send TC 1800006 forward to the governing bodies with a favorable recommendation.
Properly moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Moved by Commissioner Bryan, seconded by Commissioner Williams. I think before we do vote, we want to just give an opportunity for any discussion on the motion. Commissioner Al Turk?
Well, I'm sorry I raised my hand a little too late, but I, I would actually like to hear from the Transportation Department. I, I mean, I'm, in a case like this, where we know that NC DOT has, you know, limited capacity to maintain roads, I mean, is there a public, is there a benefit to actually having counties, or subdivisions like this have private streets? I mean, just from a, not just for the subdivision itself, but for the city and the county as a, as a whole?
Bill Judge, City Transportation. So this is a county case?
Right.
And only, I was, you know, and so we are a city department. So I don't know that I can particularly answer your question, other than, I mean, the state DOT is constantly challenged for maintaining roads all over the county, basically, that they're constantly looking for opportunities to reduce their maintenance responsibility because there's never enough money to maintain roads.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and I'll say as part of the discussion before the vote, I've been on the fence on this issue. I'm inclined to, to vote with Commissioner Bryan, knowing that we have the ability to come back, even though I do share some of the concerns. I know the staff's thought about this and worked on this, so I'm inclined to vote for it. Any additional comments or discussion? Commissioner Johnson?
I just broke my promise to ask questions. So to the, to the applicant, one, one last question, and this may help me think through. So can you give us a sense of the price point of this subdivision that you're developing? What's the price point of the, the units that you're building? And do you have a sense of what the HOA fee is associated to these units?
I can say that the lots are going for, like, yeah, the houses are a million dollars. The lots are selling for 600,000.
And so do you have an idea of what a HO, a monthly HOA fee would equate to for a, a lot unit? Can you repeat that for the, for the record?
$1,500 a household per year. And currently, there's 183 households that have been developed.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to ask that we can just ask very focused questions. We've had our time for discussion. We have a live motion. This is normally when we vote, but I do want to allow further discussion, but let's try to keep it brief if we're able to. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah. So just on, on the back of those questions, and I think those are good questions, but I just want to remind everyone that this is something that will apply to the, to the county jurisdiction, to the entire county jurisdiction, not just in this one case. So just a reminder.
That's a, that's a fair reminder. And Commissioner Miller?
So I want to throw something out there that, as I've been trying to decide how to vote on this backwards and back and forth. One of the things that, when I look at the current rules and the limitations there, they seem to be for, private streets are allowed, but where, where we allow them, we want them to be fairly small applications. The exception to that, I suppose, would be PDRs. And I suppose you could have big multifamily developments, but, and even big conservation subdivisions. But it seems to me that this would allow, possibly, in land that's already zoned for single-family development in the county, fairly large systems of private streets. And I have to say, there's something in me that I can understand a fairly small system of private streets that don't necessarily, because private streets may be exclusive, private streets mean private. You don't have to let it be just anybody drive on them. There's something in me that says that while it's, it's appropriate to allow some of that, to allow a lot of that is bad public policy. And because I don't have a very strong sense of, of how, of, my concern is, is that we could, one, one consequence of this could be is we could wind up with some large subdivisions in the county jurisdiction that are already zoned, single-family, don't have to come for us, we would never know, no rezoning required, systems, big swaths of land that are subject to a regime of private streets maintained by the state, but available only to the, to limited number of persons. That makes me uncomfortable. And so I'm going, I'm going to vote against that, against this because of that. But primarily, I'm persuaded by Commissioner Member Durkin, whose argument, if I understood it correctly, is a countywide change for one phase of one subdivision is not the way to go unless there's obvious countywide merit.
Thank you. Mr. Stock?
Just wanted to make sure we are clear that when we're talking about county jurisdiction, we're talking about anything outside of the incorporated.
City limits, right.
So just want to make sure we're clear.
Thank you. All right, with that, we do have a motion and a second on the table. And seeing no additional discussion on the motion, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Al Turk?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Baker?
No.
Commissioner Bryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Satterfield?
No.
Commissioner Durkin?
No.
Commissioner Hyman?
No.
Commissioner Busby?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
No.
Commissioner Kinchen?
Yes.
Commissioner Hornbuckle?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
The motion fails 5-7.
Great. Thank you very much. A reminder, even a failed motion will continue to the governing body for review and debate.
That is correct. Yes.
We are on to new business, and we have two major items. We have the annual election of officers, and then Commissioner Bryan has added items as well. On the commissioner, on the election, annual election of officers, I'll ask Ms. Smith to help, number one, remind us of the process that we have, and then also to open the election process.
Hold on, I lost, I lost my place when I moved my notebooks, so hang on one second.
Sure. And I'll just note that, and, and Ms. Smith, you can remind me if I get this correct or not. We have one-year terms for a chair and a vice chair, and they can serve two consecutive terms. They're then term limited, and we then switch from a city, between a city appointee and a county appointee.
That is correct.
So I'm a city appointee. I finished my first year. Vice Chair Hyman is the vice chair, and is finishing her first year having been chair previously.
That is correct.
Okay.
Basically, you just said what I was going to say, so we normally.
Stole him for time.
No, you're good. No, you're, you're right on time. So you are eligible for reelection. Anyone, obviously, anyone else is eligible for election. Our, as staff, we'll take the nomination, and I'll be glad to tally a vote for you if that's what you'd like for me to do.
I, I think it's a, a nice way to go about things.
Yeah, okay. So normally, we go ahead and do the nomination for the chair. So who would like to move?
I would like to nominate Commissioner Busby for chair.
Second. Second.
Okay, and can I get a show of hands?
Are there other nominations?
Or Commissioner Busby.
Mr. Miller, did you have something, or are you good?
Well, I was just wondering if there were other nominations.
Well.
Since we just voted, I withdraw my comment.
I'm sorry, I mean, no one else jumped in with a substitute motion, so you should have probably had a, yeah, jumped in ahead of me, but, so it looks like you got reelected unanimously. So, sorry, I put you in there. Now we'll take a nomination for a vice chair.
I nominate Commissioner Hyman for vice chair.
Second.
Do we have any other nominations? Okay, can I get a vote, a show of hands, please? Thank you very much. Enjoy your continued seats in rank. You'll get a raise after this meeting.
I think, what's double of nothing? No, I did personally just want to say thank you, I've enjoyed it, I've enjoyed working with all of you, and looking forward to one final year as the chair.
And I think Mr. Bryan had a couple of announcements.
Thank you. Something that, in view of the discussion tonight, people might find interesting, the North Carolina Department of Transportation is initiating at least the information gathering phase of a project to widen NC 54 from 15501 in Chapel Hill to NC 55 in Durham. It's going to take a while, it's probably going to be much more expensive than they're thinking, but at least there's a project number STIP U5774. So, we may get some improvements in that roadway down the line. The second item I wanted to mention is that I have another set of duties on the Board of Trustees at the University of the South, and I will be at a trustee meeting on October the 9th, so I would appreciate an excused absence.
Great, thank you for the heads up, and we will remember to vote to give you an excused absence next month.
Thank you.
A commission, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Speaking of next month, we'll make a note of that, Mr. Bryan, for you, and we'll be sure that we bring that back next month for your attention. We do have several items on the agenda for next month, and I was actually working on that summary and didn't quite finish before I came up here, so it's rather long. Anyway, there's several zoning cases, not limited to, but including Pinecrest and the Romph.
Think of a fun one.
Yes, and we have the continued future land use map change for Forest Hills coming back. And we have a couple of other items, several items on the agenda, so. I'll send out a summary tomorrow, and if you have any questions, please contact the case planner directly or myself.
Great, thank you, and if you're reading between the lines, it's going to be a long meeting with a lot of hot issues, so.
Bring a snack.
Bring a snack, or find a board like Commissioner Bryan to serve on, requires your attendance elsewhere. Commissioner Miller?
I'll check our calendars.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have a request, and it's a request not only of the commission but of staff, because I'm actually asking for staff work. The North Carolina Independent, the Indy, ran an article probably three or four weeks ago about controversy associated with development and rules having to do with the open space land near Patterson Place, compact neighborhood tier. Would it be possible to get kind of a staff briefing on that, and the staff's perspective of what's going on there? How we handle the conversion of compact neighborhood tiers to design districts, and what actually happens on the ground? We've seen it happen, we've had the experience at Ninth Street, and now it's happening in other places. I'd kind of like to know, be briefed on what's happening with these. And I read that article, I'm not sure, from reading the article, I understood all of the issues. We, at least I received an email from an interest group associate who cares about what's happening over there, and I would like to hear the staff's perspective at some future meeting, maybe not the next meeting. And then, I also have to say that, you know, we're the planning commission, we have a statutory duty to advise the elected bodies on what's happening in planning, and I have to say, I'm a little disturbed to see that the expanding housing choices program is so far along briefings to the elected body, and we've had no briefings at this level at all. And at some point, I would like to have us have a briefing. I would hate to have that come to us as a 10 minutes per side public hearing vote, and then we're done.
Second.
Too big a deal.
Great.
For your first request, the, about the article in the Indy, I will check with staff, and we can probably get something for you on the November agenda. October is fairly loaded down, and I'm not sure we can fit it in, but I'll let you know at the next meeting for sure.
Thank you.
I think Assistant Director Young's going to speak to your other request.
Sarah Young with the Planning Department. You are slated to get an informational item, both on Patterson Place and on the expanding housing choices projects, so those will be coming to you. They will come to you in advance of a public hearing. I don't know off the top of my head what the schedule says, but you will, you will get briefings in advance on both those items.
All right.
Those are already built into the schedules.
Excellent, thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Hyman?
Yes, I wanted to make a statement only because I was asked a question about something that happened in our community that I am very proud of, and that I owe a debt of gratitude to the city of Durham for, and that includes the streets in front of my house in our community. I happened to move in one of those failed communities, and the streets were not done, and it was not something that we, you know, were aware of, but I do, I worked on that particular project, and I just wanted to say, because I know that my neighbors could be listening and everybody else, that the city of Durham was able to complete those streets for us in conjunction with a new developer, and it's something that we are very proud of, and very proud of the way that we work with the city of Durham in getting that done. So, just wanted to say kudos, thank you.
That's great. Any other comments? Commissioner Baker?
I'm curious about the zoning map change reports. Is there any way, can I make a request that some additional information is provided? Is that within our review here? I would be curious if, in these reports, we could see when there's a residential, an application for residential development, if we could see walking distance to schools, parks, and maybe a grocery store. Is that possible? I don't want to add to you.
I'm not going to be able to answer that, like, on the fly tonight, because we have some other things going on, but I will certainly look into that and report back.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Seeing no additional comments, I just, again, want to thank you all for your time. This meeting is adjourned, we'll see you next month.